Well, I would like to welcome everyone here today, our viewing audience, to the October 24th meeting of the City of Danport Zoning Board of Adjustment. Your participation in city government is appreciated and welcome. If you have a mobile device, please turn it off, may interfere with the room's electronics. My name is Jim Reisstrafer, Chairman. To my immediate or far-left is Tom Quinn, member. To my immediate-left is Lynn Cotgren, member. To my right, or far-right is Carrie Strahan, Vice Chair. And to my immediate-right is Judith Lee. Staff members are Scott Koops and Mallory Hoyt, our City Attorney. The Zoning Board of Adjustment is a five-member judiciary board established by the state law. We are appointed by the Mayor and confirmed by the City Council to serve without compensation for a five-year term. The Board meets twice a month to hear appeals involving hardships from strict application of the current zoning laws. We also grant special use and rule on administrative appeals. Is there any corrections to the minutes from last meeting?
I may have missed it, but is there, do we need a mention of a motion and a vote on tabling that last week, or the two weeks ago? I didn't see it in the minutes.
That's true.
Scott? We have a question from one of, from the Vice Chair.
I don't know if it's legally required or not.
So, so you're saying it's okay?
Any action that was taken regarding something on the agenda should be reflected. So if it was tabled, it should be reflected that it was tabled, just like a vote would be reflected. Do you have a, a motion to amend the minutes?
I'm sorry, I, I'm having trouble hearing you, so, but yes, I would, I would amend I don't know who, I don't know who seconded it last time, so, but I would move, so we put it on the record that... As long as it's on the record, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to make sure it's on the record, that's all.
Mallory, do we need a motion at all at this point, on anything?
Can you, can you hear me, or should I shout?
Now we can.
Okay. Yes, you should make a motion to amend the minutes and say how you'd like to amend that. Somebody who was here last week, or two weeks ago, should be the person to do that.
I would make a motion to amend, and make the motion that we tabled it for one cycle.
I'll second.
Do we need a voice vote, Scott?
Yeah, voice vote, Scott.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any old business? Apparently, this was the item that was tabled last cycle. I guess I'll read the, the request. It's HV 19-15 of Tom Lynch at, yeah, okay. At 526 South Clark Street for hardship variance to construct a six-foot privacy fencing along the south, east, and north property line and to the immediate west of the dwelling. Section 17.09.030H, point two, point of the Danport municipal code requires a four-foot fence in the front yard and an open fence in the corner side yard for fences over four Staff?
Good afternoon, I'm Matt Flynn, Community Planning and Economic Development. If you recall, for the Board members who were here, I covered the last meeting, so I thought it was appropriate that I follow up. And let's correct, the petitioners were faced with a three-member board and they chose, as their right, to come back with a, a full board for your consideration. Just quickly noted, this may found its way into the, into your plans. This drawing actually shows the, the location of the fence actually within the, the right-of-way. The right-of-way has some additional width here and that, and the petitioners are aware of it. And, and this drawing probably encapsulates everything that's being requested. The red outline shows what their request is. And again, this would be for a solid six-foot-high privacy fence surrounding, going up to the property line, surrounding basically the area east of their former church, soon-to-be home that's currently under renovation. What's shown in green is what is allowed by code for a solid fence. That would include nine feet from the property line here to align with the, the south elevation and 15 feet front yard requirement along Clark Street. Now, they could, could build a fence six feet high up to the property line if it was, if it was open. You could also build a four-foot solid fence in the front line if it was open, because one of the considerations is making sure that the visibility triangle isn't affected. We've drawn that in here and probably to their benefit with a wider right-of-way, it doesn't actually impact any other private property. We did prepare, just for illustrative purposes, what a six-foot solid fence would look like on the property. That would be along the south. This would be along the east side. And we did do our notification, actually since the meeting on the 10th, we did receive one neighbor expressing a opposition to the request. So again, we went through the findings. The new code has four approval standards. First one is, you know, the hardship, the hardship request. We don't believe that not allowing the fences proposed is going to create any undue hardship to the petitioner. Second one deals with physical characteristics that may come into play. Again, you can see with the, the top photo, the site's relatively flat. The lot is rectangular in shape. We don't believe that there are any physical burdens that are associated with the property. We don't believe that the third finding is, is, has been met. However, as I said at the last meeting, it's probably, it could be argued that, given the location of the, the former church, being located on the far west end of the property, basically in the back, may create some unique circumstances. But I think getting back to what the fence is going to appear like, it, it does seem to tend to wall off the entire property and there's really no other situations like this within the neighborhood, so we don't believe that those are, those are, that finding is met either. So, again, staff cannot recommend approval of the variance and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Just to go on the record, I believe the protest letter had to do with, there were no fences like that in the area and...
Yes, that's correct.
And they didn't want to see one there, in that neighborhood? Is that...
I think that's pretty much the gist.
Matt, did you have any concerns about the traffic Clark Street?
Yeah, we, we looked into that. Both streets are, are classified as local streets. That being said, you know, they carry a fair amount of traffic and Clark Street is pretty much a straight shot. I don't believe that there's a lot of stop signs there and we've heard anecdotally from others, including the alderman, who wasn't commenting specifically on this case, but saying that, you know, the, the traffic can be a concern on Clark Street. However, it, it does not impact that site visibility triangle, so it's, it's not a major factor and it's not, I don't believe it's a, it's a specific factor in your consideration.
Matt, could you please revisit on the slide standard number four? Okay, the essential character, I just wanted to make sure I had that correct. Thank you.
Matt, the, the map that you had the green line on, this would be allowable by code?
Yeah.
Is that, would that be a four-foot fence allowed?
That'd be a six-foot tall fence.
So they could build a six-foot fence where the green line is?
Only with a smaller, smaller area within the fence.
Okay, thank you.
Two questions. And that six-foot fence would have to be an open fence?
No.
In the green, no, it could be solid?
Yes.
Did they come in, the petitioners come in and talk to the city after the last meeting to discuss any changes?
They may have talked with Scott and again, Scott has been working with the, the couple for quite some time and I was just filling in kind of at the last minute at the, at the meeting on the 10th.
So there's no, no variations in this proposal from the last meeting?
Not to my, not to my knowledge.
Is it possible for us to use the projector, tie the iPad in so we could show pictures?
Or we can just hand you our phone and you can take a look at them yourself if you like?
The only thing then, we'd have to confiscate your phone.
Okay. We have photos that show there are other properties in the area that do have a six-foot solid privacy fence.
If, if they put, if they use their iPad to put things up, does that mean we have to confiscate their iPad?
If they don't have a way to connect the projector, if they can do that on their own, that's fine.
I cannot have connection?
But we can use the projector, is that, okay.
I'll just disconnect here.
To your question, we will just have you guys email Scott with the pictures afterwards so we don't have to confiscate the phone.
Okay, that's good.
My name is Thomas Lynch.
So in reference to number one, item number one, there were comments in, from the last meeting actually, where the staff commented that this is a self-created hardship. The desire to have a fence other than what allowed by code is not evidence of a hardship. We do not feel the hardship is self-created for the following reasons. One, at the time of purchase, we did not anticipate there would be concerns for safety. Since we purchased the property and began renovations, we've had one break-in resulting in a $5,000 loss. There's a police report number 2019-2018. We've had two of our irreplaceable and original stained glass windows broken out. On two occasions, we have found our water spigot to be turned on and releasing water for an undetermined amount of time. There is no way we could have known that our home would be the target of a burglary or vandalism, which seems to be a repeat process. And we also did not willingly choose to build a structure on the west side of the lot. As far as the item number two, a staff comment was that the topographic, yes, so the lot is flat and does not limit the use of the property. No physical characteristics of the property pose a hardship and a fence can be located in the area requested, but not at the height and style desired. So our, essentially, what we would like to say to that effect is, though the lot is flat, it is not the topographical hardship that we are having. The building itself being set on the opposite west side of the lot does in fact pose a topographical hardship, as almost all other buildings and structures in the neighborhood are located on the east side of their lots. Lots with the structure located on the east side of the property provide the lot with a visual barrier to the backyard. Our structure being located on the west side of the property would leave a direct view of the backyard from anybody on the outside. As far as item number three goes, the plea of the owner is due to unique circumstances that do not apply to a majority of adjoining or nearby property. Again, it is not a self-created hardship. As you can see, there are other, this is an example of a building, of a house that has a six-foot solid privacy fence in front.
This would be the, the front of the house, 2605 Boise. And they do have their visual triangle cut off there. The six-foot fence does go up to the sidewalk past the front of the home.
So staff comments last time were, the dwelling is located closer to the alley than other homes on the street, as it was when the property was purchased by the petitioner. We do understand that. They also stated, "A six-foot fence located in line with the house to the north and south wall of the subject property is the closest a solid six-foot wall, tall privacy fence can be located." They had, obviously you've seen the site plan. A six-foot fence located in line with the house to the north and south wall of the subject property is the closest a solid six-foot tall privacy fence can be located. The fence being in line to the north and south side of the house is not uniform to the other houses in the neighborhood and where they have their fences.
Most fences are located on, up to the sidewalk.
And if that's true, then that would mean that the majority of the houses in the neighborhood are not complying with zoning ordinances.
This location, 412 Concord Street, they actually have a six-foot privacy fence up to the front of their yard. Yes, ma'am. In, in this case, 412 Concord Street, they actually do have a six-foot privacy fence up to the front of their lot.
So then moving on to item number four, the hardship variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the locality. You know, the main entry door to our home is 12 foot from grade of the sidewalk and the main floor is 14 feet from grade, whereas the rest of the houses in the neighborhood are either level or no more than four foot from the sidewalk grade.
So, so this is a representation of a six-foot fence at the sidewalk and you can see where our windows and doors are visible to, over that fence. There's another picture of that. This is moving out to the corner of Clark and McKinley. So, windows and door are still visible due to the, the higher grade that the, the church is actually sitting on. It's a, it's, the front door is actually at 12 foot from grade of sidewalk. Our main level is 14 foot from the grade of the sidewalk.
So if we were grade like everybody else in the neighborhood, it would make sense that a six-foot fence would be excessive, because it's a lot taller than the actual structure. But our structure puts us up a lot higher than every other home in the neighborhood as well, because of the way it was built. And that's pretty much all we have, aside from the fact that we both grew up in the west end and we moved away and decided to move back and we just, we want to make the neighborhood better and make it look good and raise property value. Last time we were here, we, there wasn't a person or another neighbor that opposed, so we weren't aware of that. We've considered maybe doing a...
At the front of the house, a gapped fence up to, you know, a, a wood privacy fence up to the 15-foot point of, off the sidewalk and then change to a staggered wood fence at that point, if that would, if that would help things, you know, as far as aesthetically look. I do know that it is possible, I think you could do a chain link fence up to that, up to that.
Wouldn't be very, very good on the eyes, though.
Not very appealing, definitely not as, as aesthetically pleasing as the wooden fence.
And we have, we have dogs and we have urban chickens with a permit, of course, and not having the ability to utilize in our entire yard space would interfere with our, a garden that we want to have and separating our chickens from our dogs and our chickens not flying over the four-foot fence or our dogs jumping over the fence. So, we feel like there are a lot of reasons we should be granted this variance and, you know, we're happy to make it look as beautiful as we possibly can, because that's the objective, is to obviously raise the value and have that curb appeal.
I don't think we have anything further.
Do you have any questions for us?
A question for staff. If I remember right, this, every decision we make is on a case-by-case basis without looking at precedents or non, other non-conforming issues that may be occurring in the area. Is that correct?
That's correct. So the hardship variance still applies only to this property. If there's other illegal fences out in the neighborhood, that doesn't necessarily have a bearing on this request. Yeah, correct.
And I have another question for staff and it relates to my previous question on, did the petitioners come in and work with you? Because what I'm hearing now is perhaps an adjustment in their request? Is, is that what I heard? You'd be willing to make an adjustment?
We'd be willing to make an adjustment. We also didn't know that that was an option, to go in and, and discuss this outside of today, so otherwise we probably would have. But I don't know what that, what that would have led to, because we still want something that's six feet tall at that location.
But it may be an open fence?
Yes, yes.
Rather than a solid fence. So with that situation, is this something that we should consider another tabling to give them an opportunity to work with you on this? Or is six-foot just...
That would be at the Board's discretion. I did talk with the petitioner prior to, or right after the application was submitted to discuss options and I did bring these options up at that time and they didn't wish to go forward with them. If they wish to change their application now, it'd be nice to see what kind of fence and where it's located so we know what we're dealing with. I don't know if he's talking about a, an alternating board fence? I don't know, that's still kind of a solid fence, so I guess we'd have to see what the fence would be.
Because I don't even know what that is, an alternating board.
Yeah. Well, there's a board, a slat on one side, but, and then there's a middle board that supports it, and then on the other side, there's a gap. So there's gaps on each side about the width of the board, but because it's on every other side, it looks solid when you're looking 90 degrees square to it. If you're at an angle, you can kind of see through it a little bit. So I don't know if that's the fence he's referring to. The other thing is, the, the green line shows where they could put a six-foot solid privacy fence. It's a few feet back of the property line, but it would still provide the protection that they need for, you know, the break-ins or whatnot that's going on.
In, in regards to what type of fence, we were not tinkering of a staggered fence, but just a gapped. So, a, a picket missing from each one, so that way it would get a, a complete visual views through the fence.
We wouldn't do a chain link, that's just not...
That would look like a...
It would look terrible.
Fortress.
So we wouldn't do it. You know, we, we couldn't afford a wrought iron fence, otherwise we'd love to put one up. An aluminum fence, that would be wonderful too, but again, very costly. If we could wait until next year when the grants were out for fencing and roofs and mechanical that are given out in that neighborhood right now, or once a year, we would wait and just hopefully apply for the city to pay for a fence. But we don't want to wait and, you know, why would we apply for funds when we could use our own funds? You know, we want to move in this winter and have our dogs and our chickens there sooner than later. So I, I would say that if we were going to even consider a different type of fence, it would be, the gapped fence would be about as good as we could get. Otherwise, we would request a vote, probably.
But the, the gapped fence would be at the larger?
It would be at the larger.
Not at the green, but at the red?
Correct.
I, I would like to briefly comment about the, the change in the fence style. It would be approximately 50% open if it was the width of the picket. So it's basically, talking about a typical picket fence, that'd be about 50% open. Our ordinance requires 70, but 50% opens a lot, you know, more open than a solid fence is, so, and it's 20% or, 20% away from what the code requires. So that, that's an option the Board may want to consider.
I'm wondering, this is for the Board, and, and for staff, I guess, but for the Board, would we like to offer them a chance to clarify or amend their application? Would, would there be an additional cost if they amended?
No, there would not be.
Okay. Would, would you like to consider giving them the option? Because it sounds like there's several options on, and, and it doesn't sound like we're prepared to make a decision at this point.
I would like to give them the option to amend.
Is that...
And I, I'm sorry.
I would ask, with your permission, do you want another, to be this tabled on our next cycle, which is what, two weeks away?
Two weeks. Time is unfortunately the essence for us, because the ground, as the ground gets colder, it gets harder to dig posts. So we have a lot going on in our construction phases at the church right now. We were hoping to get a decision two weeks ago, but we tabled it for, to have a full board. I think pushing it back another two weeks would not be very good for timing for us.
Yeah. Excuse me. As far as making a decision today, is that something that we could move forward with?
I think we have a lot of questions and I think staff needs to answer a few things from your application. And I'm under the impression, me personally, that I would like to see this table for another two weeks before I make a decision.
I, I would like to say that, you know, we have other cases here, they could draw up the plan while the other two cases are heard. It sounds like no matter what option they're going with, they're still going to need a hardship variance, because they haven't talked about changing the height or the location. So I believe their alternate, or the options they're discussing are still going to require a hardship variance, so it's delaying a decision that would have to be made at one time. But it's, of course, it's up to the Board what you would like to do.
Scott, I think if we start changing things, don't, don't we have to have the public notification?
The public notification wouldn't be required to take a, a solid privacy fence to an, an open fence, 50% open, so it's, it's not, they're not increasing the non-conformity from the code, they're decreasing it, they're coming more into compliance. So my understanding is we wouldn't have to re-notify for that.
Okay, so, so you're saying that, that while some of these other discussions are happening and some of the other actions, that they could put a change proposal together and then come up to us today?
Right, they could draw up the plan and then talk to, to me in between cases, yes.
And we also have to ask, is there anyone in the audience? Yeah, okay.
I haven't got that far yet.
So, so the Board, the Board could, if they so choose, table it till later in the meeting, that's an option.
I moved table until later in the meeting.
Second.
Do you have a voice vote, Scott?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yep, see you later. Yep, see you later.
So, as you've stated, the subject property is proposing a garage accessory dwelling unit. Our code is a new code, it requires this to be eighteen feet from the property line. In part, the reason the eight feet, eighteen feet was chosen is because it allows for a full-size vehicle to be parked in front of the garage without blocking the al, or the, I'm sorry, the sidewalk. So, if he did meet the requirement, I mean, if he did go forward with today's request as proposed, they would just come in at that eighteen foot, he's, the record requires twenty, which would give two feet of leeway, but if, if he had the variance, he'd be like right exactly, you know, having his nose right against the garage door and the bumper right against the sidewalk, so. That's kind of why the code distance is in the place that it is it in. This is a corner, what we call a corner side yard, so it's not a primary front yard. In our old code, we called it a secondary front yard. So the house faces High Street, this is Cary, I believe. So the driveway, the new driveway would be over here and it'll lead directly to the garage, about in the same place as the existing garage, this other driveway is going to be removed. This is the plan. I don't know if you can see it, but the proposed garage is, I think, in red here. It's about the same location as the other one, it's in line with the neighbor's garage, and the distance I, I went and measured and verified, it, it would be exactly eighteen feet. And then this is where the old driveway is coming out. There's a tree in the backyard, and there's a little bit of a hill here. So, given the conditions of the ordinance, the ordinance, kind of the, the point of the ordinance having it back twenty feet is to allow a vehicle to park, they would still be able to do that. So they have met that condition. Physical surroundings, there is the tree, there is the slope there, that there's more cost to excavate the further back they go. So we, we require, or we state that they meet that condition. Unique circumstance, that has been established, I think, by providing what the code requires and the tree and the hill. And essential character won't be any different, because the exist, the neighbor right to the north already has a garage at eighteen feet, so staff recommended approval. And I did skip this slide, there was no comment either for or against the, oh, I, I take it back. Originally, there was not any, but now there's one in favor. And that I emailed to you earlier today, believe they're from across the street.
Ministers, have any questions for staff?
Does the applicant?
Yes.
Present your case.
Do you want to?
So, I'm Shannon Leverage.
And I'm Robert Leverage.
Yeah, so we have taken on the task of taking down the garage and putting up a new one. My understanding from reading, because we are requesting for an accessory dwelling unit, was actually that we were going to be required for the twenty-five and a half foot setback to no further than the west elevation of the home on the corner side yard. And given that the neighbor's house to the north of us is all the way up to that eighteen foot, and that we would have to take down the hickory tree behind it, that was the reason for our request to move that garage just a little bit forward. What we're hoping to do here is, you can see the outline where our driveway is currently, we have already demolished the garage, but that's going to go back to ground where we can garden and we'll have less, we'll have less area of our property that's under concrete, which I think is just better for us as a community. And it's just sort of the visual of having the garage in line with the neighbor's garage seemed appropriate and not to be imposing in the neighborhood.
I think our application also mentioned that there is a, the property that we own was almost twice the size that it is originally, and in the nineteen seventies, the, the property was partitioned so that, so that where the house, like the house is set back in the street, the way it was built was to be set back sort of with the larger plot in mind. And so now we have the property line on the, the west side of the property is very close to the, the western wall of the house, and so the house is situated off, like not, it's not centered between the east and the west. And so if it was, then it would be the actual side yard, what is classified as the side yard portion of our property would actually be smaller. Does that make sense? And in, and in that case, this whole thing might not even be necess, like, it wouldn't, it would be a moot point, because the, the garage would just be able to be in the official backyard without there ever needing to be any kind of adjustment. So, we're, we're confident that it's going to add to the aesthetic, aesthetic of the, the neighborhood, and it's going to be consistent with our, our neighbor to the north and also consistent with, with the house. No.
No.
It is a dark red house, it kind of looks, it's the color of brick, but it is siding. Yeah.
And a question for Scott, the, the size of the garage is not a question at all, correct? It's fully consistent with?
That is correct, the only thing that needs a variance is the distance to the street.
I move to grant the hardship variance as posed. Okay.
Since nobody seconded, say the motion fails at this point, so that you can get back to it later on.
I mean, we have, I mean, I'm happy to ask and answer any questions, but.
I guess I have a question, then what happens from here? Oh, okay, thank you. Oh, sure, thank you.
There we go. Is there anyone in the audience in favor of this petition? Is there anyone in the audience that is opposed to this request? See?
Does that mean you're in favor?
Of them getting their garage? Yes.
Yes.
Applicant, do you have any final comments? None?
I mean, we do have, it is a neighbor.
Any board discussion?
Just for the record, the, the letter in favor agreed that it would help the neighborhood, if I recall.
Can I ask for a motion?
I move that we grant the hardship variance as requested.
I second.
Scott, roll.
Quentin? Yes. Strahal?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Cochran? And Rice Dropper?
Yes.
Hello, Scott Coops again, Community Planning. There's an existing Kia sign over here that can be moved without a hardship variance, and it's going to be relocated somewhere on this site, I don't know the exact location, it's going to meet the setback requirement. But the existing Honda sign, which is right here, is going to come over here at this driveway location here, where the new Honda building is going to be. That sign was approved by variance, and so it needs to have a hardship variance to move it to the other side of the street. In the past, we've had a lot of variances with these, this property with, because LuJack's has a lot of dealerships there, and so we've tried to work with them in the past to try to limit the number of signs and limit the number of hardship variance they have, and they've been cooperative. And I think this, moving this sign from one location to the other is within the spirit of our agreements that we've had in the past, and so we've recommended in favor of the request, because it's not increasing the total signage on the, the overall site, it's just relocating it from one spot to the next, and technically we need approval for that.
Scott, we've been down this road before, but you were concerned probably two or three years ago about too many signs on buildings with.
Our new code for signs on buildings is much more liberal than the other one. And actually, we did modify our old sign code to allow additional sign towards the end of the life of that code as well. So building-mounted signage is, most all of it now is permitted unless it's too large.
I'm sure you've been on the site.
Yes.
And noticed the signs that are on the building.
A permanent signs on the building, or are these temporary signs?
No, permanent.
Yeah, as far as I know, the permanent signs on the buildings are, are up to code.
Okay.
And this is a freestanding?
Right, the one we're talking about today, the hard, the subject of the hardship variance is the freestanding Honda sign, yep. I can go, so, you've probably, if you've been there, you probably recognize the sign, but that's it. So that's the Kia sign, not really the subject of the request, but kind of. And there's the Honda sign, so we're looking south mostly in this photo. It's here now, they're going to place it over here.
Any other questions for Scott? Could you please state your name, sir?
My name is Bill Connors, I'm the construction manager for Gurley Leap slash LuJack's. We've got several new dealership projects going on in the city right now. We've really worked hard to clean up this site, we demolished three rather old, past their prime buildings on the site, build a new Honda, gotten rid of a few badges, so there's less signage, and we're just asking for your permission to move the Honda sign from one side of the street to the other. And I'll answer any other questions you have. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience? Bill sort of said it all, like, you didn't have any questions, eh?
We have to do that, because this is the transcript of the meeting.
Yeah, but I hate to have my name on the record. Doug Jarvis with Acme Sign, and I agree with Bill. A long time ago, Pete Pullman used to come in, and the zoning board of adjustments said they were tired of seeing him. And they wanted to do a deal with one for one when he traded it. This property, what we're talking about, is Honda in turn made Smart or Gurley Leap build a new building. There's a Mazda, it's a reduction, there was a Mazda dealership and a Mitsubishi dealership on the same property as the Honda, they both had pole signs. There were in excess of a hundred feet, they weren't a hundred and ninety-one feet, but both those signs are removed. So we're completely downsizing, and when it was LuJack Chevrolet, there were four Chevrolet pole signs, there was a, a used car, a truck, and a certified service. So in essence, they are cleaning up the property. Honda wanted a bigger building and a bigger lot, and Kia wanted their own building and their own service department and a bigger lot. Luckily, Kia didn't want the same size as Honda, so. Do you have any questions, I'll try and answer. Yep. Is there anyone in the audience opposed to this request? Applicant, do you have any final comments?
We would just wish that you would follow the staff's recommendation and approve the variance.
Our hope is that you would follow staff's recommendation and approve the variance for us, thank you.
Board discussion? I asked for a motion.
May we do approve?
Second.
Lee?
Yes.
Cochran? Quinn?
Yes.
Strahal?
Yes.
Rice Dropper?
Yes. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, and then all this changes that were happening today, I forgot to tell you that we received an email from Lamar, and they have withdrawn that request. So the next item would be the tabled item. Sorry about that.
So, so there is no application at all?
Yeah, it's been withdrawn.
Should we say our names again?
Yes, please.
I'm Michonne Lynch.
Thomas Lynch. Well, what we, our proposed changes would be to try to make things a little bit easier for everybody. As far as the fence location, the red line would still represent the, the fence, fences' location, but on the west side of the property, where the green box is, where it comes back from Clark Street, we propose that we would stag, we would switch to a staggered fifty percent view fence in that front portion of the yard, that way giving visibility through the fence at that portion.
From the front of the building.
And, and just to make sure I understand, that staggered part, this is west, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm directional challenged. And that staggered fence would be at the red point or the green point?
The, it would pass, pass the green point, the red line passed the green. Oh, okay, I see, yep. Okay, so, from this point would be the fifteen feet of the front yard, so from here, out to the front, we could switch to the staggered, back to this fifteen foot point. So that way it would leave the, the fifty percent. So that way, it would leave, uh, the 50% opening at, at the front of the residence?
I do understand that in this circumstance, it's a case-by-case scenario, and the other homes with the fences are not relevant. But if our home were to be in the front of the lot, like every other home was, building a six-foot fence in the backyard at that 15-foot line, probably wouldn't have been an...
Wouldn't require a variance.
Wouldn't require a variance. Hope we have an imaginary home up there.
And then the rest of the fence would stay six foot solid along the red line?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I know you've been listening to this. What's your recommendation?
Well, the, the fence on Clark Street would be nearly compliant, because you can see through it almost as well as a 70% open fence. So it, it's up to the board what they want to consider regarding, I think the other, is McKinley is the other street. So...
I look, you know, when I'm on this board, I look for your recommendation. What's your recommendation?
That one street is nearly compliant, and the other one is the same as what it was.
Denial, right? Am I correct?
Yeah, I can't, technically, I can't recommend approval, but it's, the board can do things at their own discretion.
I, I do have, if I could, um, on the, Scott, in the, uh, the, the fence that you have here located on the, the side yard, um, what are, what's the basis of not allowing it to be at the red line?
Uh, the code was written so that neighborhoods don't end up with a proliferation of fences walling off all their neighbors.
Okay, in the, in the actual, um, in the code, excuse me, City Davenport Code, um, it reads, no more than, uh, no more than six foot high is low, a fence no more than six foot high is located on the rear of the property line or on the side yard line behind the front building line. So nowhere does that say there that it can't be on the sidewalk. There's not a, there's not a determination of...
Okay, when you said behind the front building line, that means it's behind the front building line. What the fence you have proposed there is in front of the building line.
So the building line note, it reads as it's a, that the 15-foot off of the sidewalk, correct? That would be, that would be the standard building line for the, for the, for the block?
Correct. That's where the, the green line is, and that's what shows you where you could put a solid six-foot fence at that green line and inside that green line. Anything outside the green rectangle, the code requires either open or four-foot solid.
I guess I said, I, it's still, this, this line right here would be considered the front line of the house, as a standard to all the rest of the houses on the block. So, that being said, then our six-foot fence could be on this red line. There's nothing in the code that says that it can't be a six-foot fence on the side yard.
Scott, can you clarify, please?
Yeah, that, that situation you're referring to is something that's in the side yard or the rear yard. That would be a correct statement if this was, if your lot wasn't a corner lot, uh, and you only had the frontage on Clark, then your statement would be correct. But you have a second, you know, it's called a reverse corner side yard or a corner side yard, and that has requirements that are not as onerous as what's along Clark Street, but there still are requirements there that it can't be six foot tall at the property line as, as a solid fence. It can be open, um, but so it, you know, if this was an interior lot, and it was in your side yard and rear yard, you could be up to six feet tall.
I'm not sure where that code is, is located, but all the information that I've received from Scott, there's nothing in here. It just says six foot on the side yard line.
There aren't contingencies.
Right, six foot on the side yard line. That's not a side yard line. What, the, the property line along McKinley is a secondary front yard. It's a reverse corner yard line, not a interior lot line or a side lot line.
That's what they're referring to, our property.
I, I can talk to you about the code after we're done tonight, but the request before the board today is not an appeal of administrative decision, it's hardship variance. So...
Yep.
You could file another, uh, request to appeal our administrative decision, and we could act on that, but that's going to have to be another item for another day.
So Scott, for clarification, for me, if they had along the red line on Clark Street and then down McKinley, if that was open, it could be six feet, and then on the east and that side, it could be closed, correct, at six feet?
I'd like to verify one thing. This is a new code. I think that's correct, except for maybe not along Clark Street. Yeah, so solid fences are required to be four feet in height?
Even along the, the back and the side that are not facing the street?
Correct. If it's solid, it has to be four feet.
A question, Scott, if I could, um, so if it, if we were to do a, a six-foot chain-link fence, would our location still of the side yard or what you're considering the...
Reverse corner?
Yeah. Would that still apply there?
Right, so the, the, the line in green?
Yes, yep.
Solid six foot is allowed there and on the inside. Moving too fast for it. But the, I'll be right there.
So the exhibit with the green line, the green line is where a six-foot fence can be at a solid fence. And on the inside of that green line, so that whole green rectangle can be, fences anywhere inside there can be six foot tall in privacy fences. If you come outside of that green triangle, that's where it has to be open if it's more than four feet tall.
So it could be a six-foot chain-link fence all the way around where that red line is?
Correct.
Um, I would really prefer not to do that, to put a six-foot chain-link fence up around my entire home. It would very much reduce the...
The look of a prison yard.
The, the, the look of our home and, uh, you know, our ability to have privacy in our house, but, um, I would still like to, we, we would still like to stick with the, the, uh, pro, uh, proposal we brought up, um, reducing the front portion of the yard to a, uh, a 50% spaced fence. And hopefully, we, see how you guys decide. Thank you.
Oh, hold on.
Because the, the house sits quite a bit higher. Do you know how much?
The, our, the, our house itself, from the sidewalk, the front door is 12 foot from the grade of the sidewalk, and our main level of the house is another two foot higher than that. So 14 foot high from the, the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairperson, uh, my name's Jeff Weindrich. I'm a property owner in that end of town. I live in Badendorf. I was born in Davenport, though. Is there any chance to get the one that's got the lines on it? I have a question and then a comment that, I, I believe there's a, a valid reason to, to allow some variance here. I think there's a question I didn't quite understand. Maybe you can hang around a second, Scott. The, the area that would be closer to Clark Street, that was the area they were talking about, uh, making where it wasn't solid, what part would the not solid part be? Is it, is it...
You, you have to direct your questions to the board. I, I'm not...
That's what I'm asking. Is there a, this thing? Is this pointer work? Is this what I use? Okay, the, oops. You gotta hold it, okay. From here to here, I, I thought I heard this was going to be, um, where you could see through it not solid. Was it also going to be from here to here not solid? And then from here to here? Okay, so this is what the revised request is right now before you. And this, I believe, would be the visual corridor for the corner. So that's not infringed upon, et cetera. Okay, so I, I can see where, especially with the, the layout, the way the house faces and where the other setbacks are, because I think this is a front yard setback over here, that, that this being clear would not diminish the ability to see kids walking down the sidewalk, et cetera. And once they get around here, once they get to this point, they can have a solid fence anyway, that would in, you know, block any view. So just, I was just trying to be clear on what they were asking, so it's more than just that one little north, uh, sire west or whatever that direction is. It's, it's, uh, like a three area that's going to be. And I think that's significantly makes it better, and I think that, uh, the u, the usability, I'd hate to see chain link. I think this is much more attractive for the neighborhood, and, you know, I drive down to see my properties, I'd much rather see that setup than this. So I just was speaking in favor of the one that has the slats you can see through, and I don't think that where they're going to do it is going to cause a negative impact or a safety-related factor for seeing through. So thank you.
Anyone else in the audience in favor of this request?
I'm in favor. I don't have any comment, I'm just in favor of it. Oh, for the record.
Yeah.
My name's Robert Leverage, and Robert Leverage, and I'm in favor of the request.
Any further comments?
Just to make sure I'm clear. Exactly what was said for the front and 15 feet down would be open, but along McKinley would be six feet enclosed, and then along the other two sides on the red line would be six feet enclosed. Correct?
That was my understanding, yes. So from this point, uh, well, right here, on the, on the browner red line, all the way back, that's going to remain as it was originally proposed, six-foot solid privacy fence. This remains the same, six-foot solid privacy. This remains, uh, the same, six-foot solid privacy. Once you get here, then it, it's, uh, six foot, but it's, uh, an open, it's like a, a, uh, I can't even think of the name of it anymore, but... Pickett. It's like a picket fence, but it's, most picket fences are only four feet tall. Traditionally, they're, they're shorter. I don't know why, maybe structurally, they're not as sound. But, so the picket-style fence starts here and is along this line, it is along this Clark line, and I think they were proposing it on, along this small portion of McKinley as well.
Applicant, does that have any final comments?
Our neighbor to the left there, they are in favor of our fence. Oh, gosh, okay. Sorry. Our neighbor directly to the left here, the actual homeowner is in favor of our fence. In fact, we've discussed an easement to where we can move the fence perhaps towards his property line. He would, he's, if it's, if it's needed or down the road, we've been in communication with him. He's totally down for the fence, though. He's excited about it. The neighbor across the street from us, directly, um, south, is also in favor of the fence. I didn't know we could bring letters in from our neighbors, but I, I would have, because we have at least three that we know of immediately surrounding us that are in favor of our fence. So that's, just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Scott, is the letter in opposition within the 200-foot?
Yes, it's directly across the street at 527 Clark, South Clark.
And that was before the fence was proposed to be open?
Right, that's with the original request that didn't have it open, that's correct.
Well, they asked for a motion.
I would move to approve of the revised request.
My second.
Cochran?
Yes.
Quinn?
No.
Stray Hall?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
And Rice Dropper?
I'm going to go with the staff recommendation, no.
So the motion passes 3-2.
Business, I asked for a motion to adjourn.
I would just like to thank staff and the applicant for helping us through this. This was...
Thank you very much. Thank you. We are greatly appreciative. Thank you.
Okay, I have a...
Thank you for being flexible, board, by tabling the request.
Thanks, Scott, for your input. Again, uh, you too, Judith, for asking questions, you too, Lynn. Okay, have a motion to adjourn.
I move re-adjourn.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It passed.